This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we should start with attendance.
Sure, okay.
Catherine Zemeckis, absent. Nick Webb, Nick is away. He's not going to be here tonight. Bertrand Schmitz. Lawrence Wollett.
Here.
Marjorie O'Cona. Joan Ullati.
Here.
I'm sorry if I mispronounced it.
That's okay. It's close enough.
Is it? How is it spelled, pronounced?
It's Ullati.
U?
Latte. Like Dunkin' Donuts cafe.
Mary Jo Phelps.
Here.
And Tobias, as a member, is absent. Actually Tobias has not attended a meeting this school year, so I assume he's not interested anymore. Okay.
Well, I see from Facebook that he's visiting colleges.
Good for him. Okay, great.
So let's see. So can I get a motion? Well, now are enough of us here that we're at the January 11th meeting?
Um, hold on.
There's just Larry.
I just started, so.
And Bert.
Yeah. Actually, we need, oh, the minute. We're not actually. They're at the very top of the agenda. Okay. So minutes is Jan- April. April 12th. And who's here? Everybody but Mark was present.
Okay. So can I entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April 12th regular meeting?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Actually.
Okay, Bert, thank you.
Okay, actually, that was an administrative session.
It was? It didn't say that on the agenda.
It says revise notice of regular meeting cancellation. Yes, there was only three people present.
That's, I see that for the March 8th one.
Oh, I have the wrong minutes. I'm sorry. Okay, here we go. Yes. Have to excuse me. I had, I was out for today and just came back in. Okay.
All right, so the motion has been made for the acceptance of the April 12th 23 minutes. I need a second.
And Bert seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All four of us. Were you there? Were you at the April 12th meeting?
Yes, she was.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Okay, so no abstentions or, okay. Then, so do we have to go back to that March 8th meeting?
No, that was, that was canceled.
Okay.
I'll just make a note in it that March.
Okay, and now for the site walk, right?
Yes.
The April 15th. Now, I myself have to abstain because I was not there.
I'll have to abstain too because I wasn't there.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Well, I was there.
And Joan was there.
Yeah, so I would make a motion that we approve the April 15th site walk minutes.
Okay, can we do that with two, two voting?
Well, it's two out of four, correct?
Right.
I believe they can, right, Abby?
I think, I think for the minutes, it's okay because you'll have two abstentions. It'll, it will be for a special meeting like that. I'm not so worried about it. If it were an action you were taking for something else, I might say you want more folks, but it'll be all right.
So Larry.
Larry moved to.
Joan seconded.
Joan?
Yes, I seconded.
Yeah, yes. And Bert and I have to abstain. Though the motion carries. All right, so that's all done with the approvals?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so this is pretty good. Chair comments? I don't have any. Pollinator pathway project.
Okay, Mary Jo?
Yes.
I have down here January 11th and February 8th.
Okay.
Which I think, I'd have to go back.
Okay, so I don't know who was present for that meeting if we can.
I can find them, yeah.
Sherry, they didn't approve those at those previous meetings?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm questioning.
I don't think they do much of, but I don't have them in front of me, so they probably were. You know what we could do? We'll just table them and then I, and then if we have to, we can do them, add them to next week.
Excellent. Well, do I need a motion for that?
No. No.
Okay, good. So we'll just table approval of the January 11th meeting minutes.
Right, chairs.
Okay.
January and February.
Okay.
Comments, none. And pollinator pathways, no discussion?
You know, I'm not sure. There's supposed to be a thing at the library, right? Nick said.
There was, and I think Nick presented it with someone else. And if they're not here, I would say let's table it until they can report on it.
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Did they have it?
They.
I believe they did.
Yeah, I do.
Let me change that. There was a pollinator pathways presentation. I'm not certain if it was put on by the Clinton Land Conservation Trust or by our Conservation Commission, but there was an event at the library.
I, yes, I, this is Bert. I was, I was at the library with that.
Okay.
So.
Do you know whose it was, Bert?
Well, um.
I'm not sure who sponsored it, whether it was us or the other, or the Land Trust.
It was, it was basically us sponsoring it. And they had a couple of ladies down from, from Connecticut that gave, gave short presentations.
Well, he never gave us a date?
No, and, and I wasn't notified to do a special meeting.
Right, exactly. So.
I don't know what, I don't know where I got the, well, I live just within a stone's throw of there.
There you go, of the library.
The library, so.
Okay, so still, I think we have to.
The Pollinary Pathway Project, I think, is, is getting ready to crank up again now that the winter, winter season's over with and all that stuff.
Did they give out, he said they were going to give out seeds. Did they do that?
I don't remember. I've, there were three meetings up at the library. One was Pollin, one was Pollinary Pathway. The other one was to change the way the state of Connecticut is going to be looking at, at various projects from the, from the local, local people. And I don't remember what the, I might have slept through the third one. But, uh, but we did have, we did have a fairly long one with the Pollinary, with discussing pollination and that whole.
I'm sorry I missed that. I didn't even know about it.
I, I didn't really know about it until I went up to the library. And somebody grabbed me, "Oh, we could use you."
You got lucky. All right. All right.
I know, I know. There were some people from Connecticut, from the Connecticut.
Pollinator pathway? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Christina was there because we talked for a little bit.
Chris.
Christina?
Yeah.
Tina.
Who's Christina?
Uh, um, used to be on our.
Oh, you mean Christine Gupeal? Christine Gupeal?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so I guess we should just move on.
But anyway.
So they did have a thing.
Dark Sky's project. Dark Sky projects.
I have nothing else on that unless anybody knows of.
I think that's the problem there. The thing there is that, you know, I have right outside in the, in the street. I have a, a big lantern hanging from a telephone pole way up that seems to light up the whole neighborhood.
Yeah.
And it's a pain in the neck.
It is, it is.
And I think, I think this is going to, this is going to stretch itself out and, and be involved, get involved with some more. In fact, I think the, the new project up here, this, this they're having problems or they're having discussions about how they're going to light the parking lots.
Okay, you mean with the old Dean Lever property?
Yeah, with the old school property that's been taken over by supermarket chain or something and a furniture place. But there's been some discussions about that. As far as the rest of it goes there, residential food composting, I think we've.
Oh, you know what? I, I would like to ask Abby a couple of questions.
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
Sure, go ahead.
So we had the permit approved, correct?
Yes, and Carl has reached out to, to Nick, and I know Nick was, was going to try to get this group together. They were looking at a June 1st or July 1st start date. I don't yet have materials from Todd on where they are in terms of prepping the actual receiving area at the transfer station. I think what would be really useful right now, because I do think they want a public education campaign to come quickly and to come, you know, really in cooperation with this group. What would be really useful is if there are, you know, one or more folks who are interested in working with me to kind of quickly get something together that can, can be sort of the basis of that campaign. So social media post kind of stuff, you know, flyers, just informational pieces, blogs, website. Yeah, okay.
Because I have a lot of question, like, what is going to be the capacity? Like, how? Like, like, I've heard that leaves are good. They're going to use leaves as well? It's going to be combined?
So what'll happen is they'll have a food waste receiving area and there's a list of materials. And I was actually surprised because, you know, meat and bones and that kind of stuff can, can also go into this, which I was surprised. I guess the volume and the heat that's generated, there's something that works there. It will get mixed with the leaf and grass waste and those things. So the food compost will be added to those other piles. And they have a program of how frequently they have to turn them and manage those. And then they'll move over to the compost side of things at the end.
Okay, are they going to have to hire someone, at least on a part-time basis, to do this new thing?
My understanding is no. I guess the way that Todd has it laid out or how he intends to lay it out is that it's going to be close to where folks are already working. And so, and they, they don't envision massive volumes of people to start. And so this is, it's a pilot program. You know, some of it really, again, it's how many folks are, you know, going to separate and haul their, their wastes to the transfer station. So I think that's a little bit of an experiment thing. Some of that, I think, depends on how well this group helps get the word out. So there's a real opportunity here. I don't have the volume from the permit. I just don't have the permit in front of me. But I, we can pull all of those various pieces out of the permit. And it's sort of that, you know, who, what, where, when, how questions that we want to make sure that we're answering for folks in a really concise and kind of catchy format, so.
Okay, and so your email, is it like a piersol?
Yep, apiersol@clintonsct.org. And I've got yours, so I can, I can absolutely email you tomorrow morning and we'll go from there.
Anybody else that's on the call who's interested in putting together something so that the Conservation Commission can help publicize the new food waste recycling, you know, composting program in town?
I can give it a shot.
I mean.
Or I could take, or I can take an assignment like from Abby, like, I'm probably better off the first time, like, maybe doing something like deliver the brochures to, I don't know, the food stores and put them on a bulletin board, like in Bishop's and or it'd have to be Clinton residents only.
Yes.
Yes, because that's the only ones who can use transfer station.
Okay, well, I can, I can help, maybe help with the design, but I probably wouldn't be the best one to make the design because I don't have like graphic stuff.
We have to come up with fancy designs. I'm thinking more, Abby, that it's text.
What do you want to say to folks and how do you want to hook folks in to sort of say, this is accessible, you can do this at home. It's not hard and we're here to help.
Right, right. And emphasizing that landfills, you know, we just have to cut down on stuff going into the landfill. So getting this out of the waste stream is.
I know the state of Connecticut has information. I know DEEP has some stuff that we might be able to pull from. There may be, it may be valuable to take a look at what surrounding communities are advertising. I know Madison just put something out on Facebook. I'm not sure what other folks are doing. But it might be worthwhile sort of saying, hey, who else is involved in this kind of programming? And what are, what's their messaging look like? And then, you know, give them a call and we can, we can say, hey, can we borrow some of this from you? We don't need to reinvent the wheel, but we want to make it our own.
Yeah, so what's like a better day for you? What days were better?
Let's see, so this week is a little bit done, but usually Thursdays have some opening. Let's see. Next Wednesday is fairly open for me. And anywhere in that sort of. Okay, yeah, I mean, anywhere, awesome. Yeah, anywhere in that 10 to 3 range is good for me.
Okay.
Okay. That might be a little bit of a problem for me just because I have to be to work at 11:00. So, but we can work something out and then I work until 3:00, so.
Okay, I can do, I can do 9:30 or we could pick. We could pick a Thursday evening, although most of mine are booked until June. Because people, people know that's when we work late. They book up early, so.
Right, so.
But we could do, we could do 9:30 on the 17th.
What, what do you think about that, Joan? 9:30?
Yes, because I'm, I'm working the weekend. I have, today I'm off and next Wednesday I'm off, so that's perfect.
That's great.
Awesome.
So this is 9:30 on, Mar?
Wednesday, the 17th.
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 Yep. So I'll try to put something together. I'll have to read. I know that you already had material on this on the last, I read it somewhere on one of the websites about what, what it's all about. And I'll try to find, where is that again? Can you tell me?
Um, I, I'll look at what was previously set out and then I'll, I'll pull the permit itself. So you have copies of the permit and you can see what we're actually allowed to do. And then I'll, we'll have a chat with Todd before then to make sure that we know kind of what his timeframe is and what messaging DPW wants to share with folks about how to navigate the transfer site and what they're hoping folks will and won't do.
Okay, because I know, real quickly, in North Haven or Northford, they had this huge compost pile that's caught on fire from within, inside, and stayed on fire for over a year. So we have to like know what we're doing with the compost. Like, they have to know how to aerate it correctly and things like that. And not make it too big, too high up. Because it can burn. That's one thing I came to mind that, but that, that would be the people that are actually doing the composting, do, do they know what they're doing already or?
Yeah, it's going to be DPW employees who are managing the site. And all people are going to do, this is, the, the education outreach that this group would be doing would be to the, to the homeowners. It's not for business use. This is a residential food waste composting program. And so essentially it's how, you know, how do you separate your stuff at home? Where do you bring it? What container should you bring? That kind of stuff. Do you leave your bag? Do you take your bag? You know, people just have basic questions on what to do. And they want, I think, the more informed and comfortable they are ahead of time, the more likely they are to do it.
And as I recall, we're going to provide containers, correct?
That I don't remember. I'll, I'll find out. I can't, I don't recall. I will find out and we'll, we'll go from there. And my, you know, some of my thoughts are things like, you know, a live stream on Facebook or a TikTok video or something kind of fun where it's like, hey, folks, follow us to the transfer station. And I think we can have some fun with it. And that might be a way to engage some younger folks. You know, if we look for a new student representative, I think there's some good opportunity there to get, you know, kind of make this a little bit different from what you normally see from the town.
Okay.
We could reach out. I, I know, you know, they have, they teach that at Morgan. They have some classes. Maybe we could get some students involved.
I think it'd be great, yeah.
For something like that, because like, that's a TikTok and all those things are just foreign entities for me.
Sure, I want, I like the idea. I don't want to be the one doing it. So I hear you.
Anyway, so great, next Wednesday, the 17th at 9:30 a.m. And I will copy Nick because he might want to be there too.
Now, during this time, do you want me to already have something prepared to present to you? Or do you want to actually brainstorm it during this time?
I think if folks have ideas or see things from other communities that you like, I think the quicker we're ready, the, the faster this program can kind of get off the ground. So I think, you know, we really just kind of want to move and provide resources to Todd to, to help this thing launch.
Okay, add it.
Okay, cool. All right, so next we have.
Mary Jo, can you speak a little louder?
Oh, sorry. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have Japanese knotweed. I don't know if anybody has anything, but I got nothing.
The only thing on that is I got an email from one of the chairs of the Sustainability Committee. And they are hoping that as folks, so there's, there's two things. One, for any past workshops that have been done on knotweed, they're looking for some more information in terms of dates, advertising, how many people attended, sort of proof of the event. So if that's anything in the commission's records, we want to, we want to capture that so that we can submit for points for the Sustainability, Sustainable Connecticut certification that they're trying for this August. The other part of that is if there are upcoming events, they're hoping that we can document that. I know there was some talk at the last meeting about engaging DPW with something behind Town Hall and trying to say, okay, here's a public demonstration of how, how this goes. That may, you know, that might be something that if we are able to, to pull that off, could be another opportunity for those students to kind of do some production and, and kind of get some experience getting the word out too.
Sure, great.
Okay. By the way, I, can I make a comment about Japanese knotweed?
Absolutely.
Okay, I was up at Hubbard Park this last weekend and it looks like somebody had cut, you know, cut it back and down and it's coming back. But it's coming back not very thick and very hardy. So I think what we were discussing at the last meeting, they don't have a good way yet to stop it. It sounds like, because they could just cut it back and they were thinking of ways to just kill it or do something so it doesn't continue growing.
There's a very specific procedure from what I remember. And I remember that it produced a pamphlet about it. So that, that pamphlet at least is something we could share with sustainability. As, I don't know if Larry or Bert, you remember, I don't think we ever had any public education about Japanese knotweed, correct?
No.
Yeah, yeah, I certainly don't recall it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the brochure that was provided to the Sustainable Connecticut group during the last attempt at certification. And I think what, in order to at least to use this and get points and whatever else, there's probably going to have to be some public something that we can document.
Right. Okay. Okay.
I was just going to suggest, why don't we keep all of these items under workshops on our agenda for next week, next month as well? When we'll have more members present and we can add further information on each.
And you do see, Sherry, it looks like Mark is here?
Oh, I did not.
Are you here? I see, I see his name and.
I am here.
Oh, there we go.
I snuck in. I was late though. I apologize.
No, I know, but you've been here for a little while, so you did hear, at least hear some of this.
I heard it. I got in at about 10:00 after.
Okay.
Or 6:40, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, so amendments to bylaws.
Excuse me, Mark. Mark, did you come in during the beginning of the workshops?
Um, I think that, oh, go ahead.
Were we doing minutes?
It was after the minutes.
It was after the minutes, yeah.
After the minutes.
I think it was right before talking about the composting.
Oh, okay. Gives me an idea where to put you in the minutes then.
Yep, thanks.
And, okay, we're up to amendment of bylaws?
Right, which, again, I don't, I thought, I thought this was resolved. I thought he proposed amendments. And we voted on them, but I'm.
Yes. Yes, you did. It's, it's kind of in between conservation and going to the, leaving conservation and going to Town Council. But that hasn't, that hasn't been accomplished yet.
All right, great. Okay, so again, like Larry suggested, we'll just have all of these same workshops on next month's agenda. Then under old business, membership. Yeah, it, student memberships. I, it seems pretty clear that Tobias, you know, has a hard time making the meetings. I don't know what we do about that. Sherry, is there any process?
Um, we'll, we can send him a letter saying, gee, thank you. Or, you know, we just technically was supposed to attend half of the regular meetings in a fiscal year. And he hasn't attended any.
Right, yeah, okay.
So he can, we can, the commission can remove him.
Okay.
But maybe just a thank you letter, you know, we, we do to your school, you know, school workload. We're assuming that you.
We know it's a busy time and all of that.
I'll make it sound pretty and send it out to you.
Great. Thanks, Sherry.
Oh, dear me.
And then.
And then maybe in the fall would be a good time to start again.
Right, yes.
We can solicit the schools.
Right, right. Okay. Also under old business is the library, the public use of infrared camera. We need to develop some public information about that. So right now, the camera is just at the library and available for people to use. It's not promoted in any way. As far as we know.
As far as we know.
Okay. Okay. So yeah.
So we may want to discuss that um, meeting forward with regard to what we should do in terms of promoting it. Not only uh, maybe with some uh, circular publication or on our site, but also maybe some, some little thing at the library saying it's available for.
Right, right. Or I'm thinking, talk to people who have taken it out. What was, did they find it easy to use? You know, did they find it um, useful? You know, did it? Like what changes, what things that they do at their home in response to information they got from using the infrared camera? That seems like that would be pretty easy. So. I can, I'll talk to Nick. And, but I can put something together just, you know, but you're right Larry, something at the library too.
Maybe on the website. On our, on conservation website.
Yeah, oh, it's not on there?
I don't think so.
Okay, yeah, definitely. That seems pretty easy. I'm wondering if like um, something in Clinton Events. Magazine. You know, just a whole, some, some commissions I've seen, they don't do it every issue, but say once a year, they go through all the things that they've been working on. And that'd be a good place to put, you know, the, the um.
Yeah, I was going to mention, did Nick?
And the, you know, pollinator pathway. What was that Larry?
Did Nick, is he the one that got the uh, camera to begin with?
He, he did.
And do we know who he got it from?
No.
I'm wondering if the organization that provided it has some circular information on it, which we could use to promote it. In other words, I'm assuming they gave it to him because of, you know, maybe it was connected with some programs or some initiatives and it, it kind of went through that. That, that information, if Nick got some, that might provide us with the basis upon which to put together, you know, uh, an informational piece. And promote it.
Right. Yeah. But like a, a, a great little test, just even a couple sentence testimonial.
Testimonial, yeah.
And you know, was glad that they did would be great. Okay. Possible open space killing with turnpike. So that was your um.
Yeah, I'd like to report on that because I'd like to work on that more uh, with the land trust. Let me say this to you, we had a great turnout. Um, we had um, several people from our committee uh, come.
I know, I missed it. I'm so sorry.
Oh no, that's right. And we had many people from the land, uh, the land trust come. Um, the land trust people were very exuberant about um, wanting to consider the purchase and to work with us as far as trying to pursue um, you know, uh, all action needed to get to the point where we can uh, negotiate a price. And if it's something that we can do to uh, to move on it. So um, the land trust, their meeting is the fourth um, Thursday of every month. So I will be, I'm sorry, fourth Tuesday. So I'm going to be reporting back to them. And uh, Mark, um, I, in addition to trying to touch base with Nick, who was unavailable because he's been traveling out of the country. Um, Mark, I wanted to uh, touch base with you. Is there any way we can get in touch with either the owner or the former real estate agent that you talked to, who is representing the owner? So that we can kind of um, move forward with um, meeting with the owner and, and exploring a, a situation?
Yeah, I was going to report on this today. That, that piece of land actually is not on the market anymore.
Well, it's not listed, but do you think they're interested in selling?
I don't know. I can, I can reach out to the realtor again and see what she says.
Yeah, because.
Because it was weird. It was very sudden. And then the realtor I was talking to didn't get an explanation back. So.
Yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll ping him again though.
Yeah.
Cause it is a really nice spot.
And yeah, and we did a walkthrough and let me tell you something, and I'll let other people who came chime in. But um, it's an absolutely beautiful site, very scenic. It has many ledges, uh, rock uh, cliffs and faces and um, up and down on the trails. Um, so it is very beautiful and very scenic. Um, we could probably call it the ledges because it's, it's such a characteristic feature of a, of the property. Um, but um, so in any event, so I'll just end by saying the land trust people are very, very excited about it and they'd like to join with our commission um, to move forward in exploring what has to be done, et cetera. And I think what they're going to want is some type of a meeting between us and them. Um, and um, so let me have, why don't I let someone else report as well that was there?
Yeah, I can say something. I just um, remember going, you go past the power lines and I thought that was public. Is that already owned by the power company or?
Power line area, yeah. And the property was just to the right of that as we moved up into it.
Oh, okay. I thought it was all part of one property. That, yes. Um, one thing that I thought was important that would, there would be no fear of someone building there because it would be too impossible to build in there because of all the ledges and the, the amount of trees that would have had to be taken out. We, I guess someone felt, maybe you felt that um, it was perfect for this type of, for public use because it, because of the um, beautiful environment and it was adjoining to water nearby.
I will say that there's, there has been, when it was on the market actively, there was fairly significant interest. Mostly from folks looking at either um, retreat, farm tourism, some kind of agricultural or um, wellness kinds of, you know, putting small cabins or having something up at the top of the hill where folks could, you know, do yoga or meditate or those types of things. There was a lot of, of that kind of discussion. Um, having, you know, sort of cottage style bed and breakfast where little cott, you know, cottages are sort of tucked into various places and those kinds of things. So we haven't talked to anybody, I would say, in the last three or four weeks on it, but it was pretty active for a while. Um, so there was interest.
Abby, how did you, um, how were you involved in the discussions? Was this something that was done with the town or?
People come to our office. People come, no, no, it's not a town, not, not a town sponsored thing. But anytime somebody's looking to develop land, they'll typically come to our office and start talking about what's possible. And so that was the kind of stuff that folks were, were sort of, were exploring.
Let, let me say this, the land trust is also interested because it's contiguous to land trust land. So that it would just continue, it could be a continuation of animal pathway, greenway, et cetera. So the connectivity would be a high, um, be a high value if we were to apply for grants on this.
Does anyone have, does anybody know what the, or remember what the, the asking price was when it was listed?
I believe it was uh, 180 for 23 and a half acres. So um, the price is right. Um, and um, you know, obviously the lower we can get it, the better. And, and what I'm thinking is this, I, I hear what you say Abby, but um, I'm going to say this to you, because there was so much ledge and it's an up and down property, there's no real flat area anywhere. And, and of course, as you go up, you've got beautiful overlooks. And on each high area. Um, but I, I think maybe they pulled it up because they weren't getting any offers because of the fact that there's so much ledge that it would be prohibitive to develop because of all the blasting required.
Some, yeah, and some of the early conversation, because I think some of the advertising materials on the property almost laid out multiple lots in a subdivision format. And when folks were, were bringing that to us, it was sort of like, no, you have some significant challenges, both from the ledge piece and then access through or adjacent to wetlands relative to meeting town road standards and that kind of stuff. So it's, it's not an easy piece for development, but something where only a driveway is required and things could get kind of tucked back on the backside around the hill. There's probably some potential there. Um, you know, it's not, probably what would be built would likely not be visible from the road, um, but could be tucked back.
Yeah.
But I agree, it's incredibly difficult.
The only question we had, and that's something I, I think maybe both commissions would want to address with yourself or other people who might be in the know is um, if the property were to be poacher, uh, purchased for open space, um, where would we have road access in order for people to come park? And then, you know, at a trailhead to move, you know, go into the property? So we need some type of access.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I think, I know that there, I am curious as to what at the end of cream pot on the other side or through other property and it's accessible by trail um, to go in because the, the coming off of 81 is going to be a challenge. And so we can talk more deeply about that, but yeah.
In fact, we had a hard time fi- finding parking for all the people. What we ended up doing is we parked at a, apparently a building with a parking area, which I think the police have for vehicles that have been confiscated and they, they're held. So it was a holding area for vehicles. So we actually had that, but then we had to cross over and go up the utility property in order to get to that property.
Right.
Exactly.
So.
So the other, the other end of the property may be more worthwhile, but I think it's, I think it's worthwhile having a discussion on you know, sort of funding streams, level of interest and, and some of the stuff that is later on in the agenda about open space acquisition process. This could be a good property to kind of test some of that out on and see how quickly it could advance.
So, and, and let me, let me end by saying this. Um, with regard to um, to the extent that it was taken off the market, and that might be because they weren't getting any offers, um, it might mean that we would have the type of seller who would be motivated to agree to an extended period before the sale goes through. Because if in fact we're going to buy it, we'd like to apply for grant money. And, and also there's so many things you have to do in connection with applying for grants and getting money. Um, as you know Abby, uh, we're going to have to get an uh, an A2 survey. We're going to have to have a couple of um, market evaluations of the property. We're going to have to have an environmentalist. In fact, we would hire an environmentalist in conjunction with the land trust. And, and they would probably be willing to split everything um, for several thousand dollars to basically look at the state um, grant application. And by going through the property, they could actually fill in the grant application noting all the positive features, uh, downside, you know, everything about the property. Um, and um, you know, that would be helpful to us as well. But this whole thing takes time, which means if you have somebody who wants to sell, they have to understand that it could take six months, 12 months, or even 18 months out before we could get to the point where it could get to a purchase area. But you know, I don't know, Mark, do you have anything, any indications from dealing with the real estate agent at the very beginning when it was listed as to what the buyer's expectations were or what they were looking for as far as how quick to sell?
No, I never got that kind of context. Um, I just texted her right now too. Maybe I'll get her a response and I'll.
Okay, so.
I'll let you know what happens.
I'll be reporting back to, let me, I, I guess I should poll everyone here. Um, how do they think, what do they think we should do at this point going forward? Would everybody be in favor of purchasing such a property? Um, or, and that obviously it'd be better to have more people from our commission to make that determination first. But if we are, if we are also favorable like the land trust is, I think the next step is to meet. Um, maybe Abby, you know, we'll have you, the planner, um, and both commissions um, or their representatives appear to start knocking out a plan, um, you know, steps of what to do next and how to proceed. And I think at the very minimum, what we might want to do is invest a small amount of our funds and the land trust funds to hire an environmentalist who will do the study. And most especially, she would identify why it's a property that should be preserved. Um, and, and the one downside to the property is if it's not developable, then there's a less of a risk that it would be developed, which is kind of a negative side on the grant application. But you know, again, it's a blessing on the fact that um,
Yes.
the seller isn't looking for a quick sell and maybe we can convince him to wait for, you know, 12 months to 18 or 24 months to get the grants.
Yeah, the first order of business, I, to me, I don't know if you guys agree, is is it, is he still interested in selling or she, he or she still interested in selling?
So Mark, can we leave it? Mark, would, could we appoint you to follow up with the real estate agent? And if you want, call me back too. I'll get involved. Um, because I got to report to the land trust in four, in a couple more weeks.
Okay, yep, I'll, I'll give it, I just texted her. I, she's usually pretty responsive. And we'll try to, try to track it down. Just give me a couple of days and then I'll.
I interrupted Mary Jo, so where did you?
Oh, no, no, no.
Keep going.
I was just saying. I think, I can't imagine somebody on this commission who wouldn't want to buy, who wouldn't want to be part of the process where we obtain, where we keep this as open space. It's a big part of our mission. But before we get any like people working on stuff, to me, the most important thing is to find out if it's still available.
Yeah, so we find out if it's still available and then if it is, and if we're all in favor of moving forward on it, then um, maybe we do get an environmentalist to do the study for several thousand dollars. And then if it's something that um, recommends purchase for preservation as open space, then we could go forward with maybe approaching the town on the favorability of moving forward. And of course, that, that raises the question, what is our um, what is our charge here? Does the town want us to buy it? Or do they just want us to act as facilitators to get the land trust to buy it? And, and in which event, the land trust would be the guardians of the property and the stewards? And they'd be in charge of maintaining it and creating trails uh, to open it up for public use.
So I, I think that's probably the direction now that things are most likely to take. Um, I think a lot of what's going to come back with this open space conversation is going to be, you know, in, in the conversations that I've had with Carl are very much about what does the open space plan look like? How are we ranking and prioritizing properties? So it's not just something comes up and everybody jumps, but there's a thoughtful way that we're evaluating and pre-planning for this kind of stuff. Um, you know, obviously, you know, things come up and, and we want to be able to respond to them, but we should sort of have a vision for where this stuff goes. And so I think there's, you know, to the extent that we can say, look, this is an opportunity to sort of vet a process that we'd like to use going forward in terms of partnerships with the land trust or if there are, you know, other organizations or however it works. But when the, you know, if, if the town is not going to own something in fee, um, and for, you know, liability purposes and maintenance purposes, that's probably a space we're at right now. Because I think the maintenance and carrying costs um, could be a deterrent. I think it's, it's going to be a matter of procedural pieces of at what point is there an ask to expend some of the open space funds that are currently in the coffers? And you know, do we need to have an, you know, an offer signed and a due diligence period underway in order to commence that? So we have some sort of guarantee that we're not just sort of spending money and then it sells the next day and we had no, um, you know, we, we started spending money before having any, any rights or, or indication that we might be successful at the end.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and, and that's a good point. So when Mark reports back, by the next meeting then, Mark, if based on your report back, um, if it sounds like that the person wants to meet, we should set up a meeting between the Conservation Commission members and the land trust uh, to discuss with the guy, the general outline of whether he wants to sell and, and what the terms could be or would be. Um, and, and again, Abby, you raised the question, we have to look inward to ourselves to determine what our charge should be. Um, are we just going to be facilitators for another Conservation Commission to take over the open space? And also, what is our, the Conservation Commission's plan, overall planning connection with the next open space parcel? Should it be this one or some other one? What is our plan? And is it consistent with it? Cause I don't think we've really approached that with ourselves, have we?
No, I, I had laid forth that we had passed around at the last meeting, um, and we could resend it out to everybody. I don't know if folks have had a chance to, to think through it. It comes, sort of, it's the next item on the agenda. Um, but I think one of the things that's going to be critical for the success of open space acquisition is having a defined open space plan that lists sort of your, your why, your how, your various means. And then, um, you know, sort of identifies that these, these, this, these are our priority. So here, here's our guiding principles and here's our priority pieces of property that we're looking to acquire. And from there, I think you start to build relationships with those owners well before they may be even thinking about selling. It's sort of, you know, look, we're going to try to get in touch with the owners of X parcel. It's been, you know, it's been on, on our radar for, you know, 10 years. We wanted this property and we, you know, we're asking for things like rights of first refusal or, you know, we're looking at grant cycles coming up and saying, hey, is there? or, you know, we're looking at grant cycles coming up and saying, hey, is there one that fits a property we've been looking for? That kind of stuff. So, it's an intentional process. What would be most used, so the, so the way that I would love to see this go is that this group has an open space plan that we have, you know, that I can support you in creating. It's adopted by this group. It's brought to the plant, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for adoption into, into the Plan of Conservation and Development, and it's endorsed by the town council. So, that when things come forward, it's not a surprise. It's part of a program that everybody has bought into, and there's records of having bought into in the beginning. Not that they're going to fund every single piece, not that we have capital funds to invest in every single property that comes along, but that the process by which we evaluate is, is accepted and supported. And I think that's, that's it, because we don't, what we're, what we're trying to do here is, is build a program and a legacy of acquisition work that the town can use into the future. And I think, so it's, it's a really cool time.
And, and I would say we still, we have a proven blueprint because when we bought the Weiss Love Day property, we had actually hired a environmentalist, applied for a grant, and got a grant. I think it was for like $140,000, and then we were able to convince the town to provide us with, I think the town contributed about 50. We had the water company come in and commit to 25 to 40, and then we had the land trust paying balance. So, it was a combination of many different sources that we could proceed in the same way and manner this time.
Yep.
But that would, Mark, I guess the first thing then is you really need to find out from the agent and or owner, is there still a willingness to sell? And can we have a sit-down in the next 30, 45 days?
Yeah, she responded, she's gonna, she's gonna figure it out. I told her to ask the owner what, what they want to do, and if they'd be willing to kind of work with us to, or talk, talk about turning it into open space through the land trust and the, and the town. So, we'll see what she finds out, and hopefully I can get connected with the owner.
And if I could ask, so you'll have that info, or try to get the info to report back at the next committee. But I'd also ask if you could let me know possibly in the next 10 days so that when I go to the next land trust meeting, maybe I can report something to them so we can slowly start to move this process forward.
I will. I'll, I'll let you know as soon as she gives me anything, any real info.
Okay, great. Thank you.
One other thing, real quick, Abby, we do have, I mean, we have a start point, I think, of what you were asking for, like a framework for criteria evaluation and like ranking. So, we did, Nick and I, and then we, everyone here, I think, reviewed it. We came up with a set of like evaluation criteria. We're not just randomly thinking something looks cool. So, it's like, does it have conservation? Does it near other conservation? Does it patch pollinator pathway? You know, there was a bunch of stuff. We do have that somewhere. At least that's one piece of what you're talking about, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think, yeah, sort of saying, okay, here is, here's the criteria that we build into the plan and say, you know, these, these meet the priorities of the things that the group is trying to accomplish.
And like Lawrence was saying, like, that land actually checks like all the big blocks because it has a piece of wetlands, it's got the river, it's scenic, it borders other open space. It's big, but it's not ridiculously expensive. You know, so it's got some seriously good qualities. So, hopefully, we can get through to the owner and see what's going on.
Right, right. And like Larry was saying earlier about access, you know, if we have to make a parking lot to make it, that, you know, then that, you have to consider that cost.
Yeah, I think you could actually sneak a little road in alongside the power line land into a little flat spot there, you know, without a whole lot of, you could probably do that through volunteers. I don't know. I don't think it's that impenetrable on the top part.
Yeah. So, we'd have to, Abby, I'm sure we'd have to talk to Todd about anything like that.
Yeah, and it's a state road, so we know, obviously, if there's going to be an additional pull-off, there's, there's that piece. So, you know, and curb cuts and stuff right adjacent to the, the power company stuff. So, there's, there's the logistics of how. There's also, you know, sort of being, if there is interest from the owner, being conscious of grant cycles and, and what perhaps the next ones might be. I haven't looked into any open space grant stuff that's coming up, but we should probably start putting that on the horizon, just so, and just so we start to get into a rhythm of, you know, when are the open space acquisition grants typically hitting?
Right.
Okay.
So, we're kind of hitting a lot of the, the stuff that was under, the first one under new business. So, is there anything else you want to add, Abby?
Um, you know, I guess what I would say is, you know, maybe at one of the upcoming meetings, it would be good to start to rough out what we want to accomplish with an open space plan and what that document should look like, how we should, you know, sort of begin to organize this conversation so that we can kind of, I think advancing it is a good, a good thing to work on, you know, over the summer and into the fall. It doesn't have to be a 75-page document. It's, you know, a lot of this is, you know, sort of, here are the guiding principles, here are the whys, here's the, the purpose, and this is how we plan to do it. And then, you know, I think looking at the existing open space planning map that exists, I want to say it's from like 2013 or something, but, but there are, you know, like, let's take the open space data that we have and sort of say, let's, let's start to prioritize and target parcels. And it may be something that we want to say, look, let's come in for an in-person meeting. We'll get some maps out. We'll sort of do this as a workshop at some point and really start to, to talk about what we're, you know, what your priorities are for proactive engagement of property owners.
Right. So, like you were saying, Mark, it sounds like you and Nick already hammered out a lot of this, a lot of the basic stuff, so.
Yeah, at least for a criteria, you know, but in terms of like taking candidates and then ranking and sorting them against that and providing like a, like a running list of potential things or something, like a program, like Abby's talking about. We didn't, we didn't go to that level, but, but we do have, I mean, we at least have the criteria to know which ones would matter the most at any given time, or ones that were worth pursuing.
Right. Okay, so.
So, should we, we'll leave these on the agenda, the 4B, 3I, yeah, as well as the land acquisition open space plan. We'll discuss both next time. Okay.
Absolutely. They're, they're going to have to be on there for a while. I mean, that's a big part of our, of our mission, so. As far as, so. So, that will be added. This next item is, is additions to next regular meeting agenda. So, we want to keep all of the workshops. We, we definitely want to talk about the infrared camera again. Definitely want possible open space. That's all, that's all that I can think of. Anybody else?
No.
All right, so I guess we're good. Oh, I just lost everybody for a second there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, you lost. We all lost.
Just went blank. Okay, and then, so Sherry, is there any correspondence?
Just the educational opportunities that I sent out various, at various points. There's no real programs coming up, but, you know, the, the different organizations have different things. It's more like newsletters.
Some of which I'm interested in, but happen at times that I can't go or, you know, are maybe just not in my budget. But some of them sound pretty cool. Okay, so it looks like we are ready. I can, I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make that motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second it. I'll second.
Okay, Mark seconds. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. All right, well, we'll see you next month.
All right.